Okay. Good evening. I'm going to call the New London Select Board to Order. Would you all be seated, please? I would ask that anyone who's going to speak, would you please come to the mic, identify yourself because the meeting is being recorded. So our first item tonight is a recognition for a member of the Tracy Board of Directors, and Sherri Williams is going to speak first.
I am Sherri Williams, representing the Tracy Memorial Library Board of Trustees, and we're here to share really good news. Yula Cosman, who's been a member of the Library Board for nearly six years, has been named Trustee of the Year.
Is that on?
It's green. Is that better?
Yes, that's better.
Okay. Thank you, sorry. We're here to share good news. Yula Cosman, who's a member of the Library Board and has been for nearly six years, has been named Trustee of the Year by the New Hampshire Library Trustees Association Board of Directors. And Kathy Parenti, who is Secretary of the NHLTA Board of Directors, is joining us here tonight to present the award to Yula. Kathy will, I will introduce you in just a few minutes, but she will tell you more about NHLTA and about the award. But before I introduce Kathy, I want to say a few words about Yula's service to the library. She was elected to her first three-year term in 2018, and by the third year of that first term, she'd already served on all of the Library Board committees. She'd been elected Vice Chair and then Chair of the Board. And then she was re-elected to a second term in 2021, and the Board re-elected her as Chair in 2021 and 2022. And during her three years as Board Chair, Yula led the Board and the library through some very challenging times with skill, compassion, and a commitment to excellence. And to describe how challenging those times were, Yula and the Board and the library faced the concurrent impacts of a worldwide pandemic, initiation of a major facilities project, and the departure of a longtime director. But throughout these challenges, Yula prioritized staff needs and kept their morale up. After the Director's departure, Yula met with the library management team weekly to hear their concerns and requests for assistance. She invited them to come to Board meetings so they could communicate directly with other Board members, too. She helped the staff continue a very careful transition toward normal from pandemic services and service hours, and she supported the staff through personnel changes and facilities emergencies, and there were several. Meantime, in the meantime, as a member of the Director's Search Committee, she researched and helped select a library executive search firm and then led negotiations for the final agreement. She remained the primary liaison to the search firm through the process, coordinated interviews and staff and Board sessions, and facilitated final hiring discussions. While all of this was going on, Yula and the Board worked together to keep the facilities project moving and on budget, despite obstacles presented by the pandemic and a 200-year-old building. She's now in the third year of her second term. She stepped down as Board Chair but remains an active force on the Board. She leads the Personnel and Policy Committee and is the Board Liaison to the Strategic Planning Team as the library moves through its first consultant-led strategic planning project. This remarkable service record could not go unrecognized, and so in June of this year, the Library voted, the Library Board voted to nominate Yula to receive the Lilian Edelman Trustee of the Year Award. So I'd like to introduce you to Yula and to Kathy Parenti, who is here to present the award. And just an extra note of thanks to Kathy and her husband, who drove here from Milford so Kathy could make this presentation tonight. Thank you, Sherri.
All right. I am Catherine Parenti. I am Secretary of NHLTA, and I am the Chair of the Wadley Memorial Library Board of Trustees and last year's Trustee of the Year. The New Hampshire Library Trustees Association assists trustees in being knowledgeable and effective in order to serve, improve, and promote New Hampshire public libraries. The NHLTA's goals and objectives are to develop a more effective body of library trustees by providing educational opportunities to assist in understanding the responsibilities and duties of the position, to offer a forum for the exchange of information and ideas, provide current information about library developments, and to advocate for and promote library services in New Hampshire. The NHLTA provides the following resources: an annual conference, orientation workshops, workshops on duties and responsibilities, regional networking meetings, a trustee manual and a quarterly newsletter. So photos from tonight will be in the next newsletter. Each year, NHLTA recognizes individuals and groups who have contributed to the excellence of New Hampshire public libraries in an extraordinary manner. All nominees must be presently connected with the New Hampshire Public Library service. They must be an active advocate for promoting the public library as the community's most important resource. They must be endorsed by the full Board of Trustees of the library making the nomination, and except in the case of the Lilian Edelman Trustee of the Year Award. Nominees have served a minimum of three years on the Board and are trustees as of July 31st in the year of nomination. The nominee embodies the characteristics of a library trustee as outlined in the NHLTA manual, as well as maintain membership in NHLTA. Award winners are selected by the Executive Board of NHLTA after reviewing and discussing all the applications. As a previous recipient of this award, I hope you feel as honored and recognized as I do. Volunteering in certain positions can sometimes be a thankless job. NHLTA feels it is important to recognize volunteers like Yula who go above and beyond in their efforts to promote and support their library. On behalf of the NHLTA, I'd like to congratulate Yula on her wonderful accomplishment.
You're pretty welcome.
Okay, we need a picture of the three of you.
We can do a photo or something. I just want to say thank you. It's not just one person, it's the whole Board, all of the staff. So it takes a team, and I really appreciate that, and obviously the support of my friends and family, many of whom are here tonight.
Yes.
Yula, on behalf of the Town of New London, the Tracy Memorial Library is a gem. I think we all realize that. And this is an honor not only for the library, for the town. So thank you very much for all you do.
I agree.
Okay. Go ahead, Jeri. Get a picture.
Oh, yeah. Where?
Sherri, yeah. Okay.
Is the lens clean?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Pierre Bedouard is going to talk to us about an encroachment agreement on Bunker Road. Pierre, here, here, I know you, I saw you are, there you are. Hi.
Good evening. So we've been working on designing a septic system for property at 667 Bunker Road. The parcel, there's a cottage on the lake side of the road, and then there's property also owned on the other side of the road. And currently, the septic system is pumped to the neighbor's property, and so we were tasked with designing a system. There's a lot of issues involved with setbacks and neighbors' wells and that sort of thing. And the system that we ultimately designed is on the property, but the fill slope extends into the town right-of-way by about four and a half feet. And so that's why we're here, to have an encroachment easement to allow us to do that. We submitted a draft, and I believe Town Council has reviewed it and approved the language as well as the owner.
Kim?
Yep, we did send it over to Town Council, who recommended a little bit, a few changes in the document, which I understand the property owner is okay with. And my understanding, I've not seen these before, but they're fairly common. I think there was one in 1991 with the state DOT.
Yeah.
A similar, a similar thing. But this doesn't affect the roadway, the town's maintenance of the road or anything like that.
Okay.
And the way the agreement is written is that if the town should need to do improvements to the road that affects where the system is located, that, you know, we'd have to make alternative choices.
Okay, I'm guessing Bob Harrington has looked at this, ear aware of it, and...
There's actually cottages that stick out a heck of a lot further than this would.
Oh, okay.
So it's actually, I don't think it's going to hinder us in any way.
Good, okay, well, good. All right, do I have a motion to approve the encroachment agreement on Bunker Road? So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, Pierre.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry Coogan is here to, he's the Chairman of the Waste Reduction Committee, and he's updating us on committee activities.
Okay, thank you, Bill, Janet, and Casey. I'm the Chair of the Waste Reduction Committee. Our members are Liz Mueller, Maureen Pearl, Joy Cubic, Chris McKee, Jerry Gold, Bill Helm sits in as a representative. We're fortunate that Kim joins us on many meetings, and also Bob Harrington. And I'm, we're going to do it like a little tag team tonight, and Maureen's going to talk, and I'm going to interject as we go along and try to make it interesting. You can see on the screen the website, and we're going to talk about that as we, we're going to scroll down and talk about what we've been doing.
He's providing the visual aids. The Waste Reduction Committee has four main goals: to reduce all the materials, the types of materials that go to the landfill, strategies to manage biodegradable waste, improve recycling of plastics, educate the residents, and hopefully work with other partners about more efficient ways to reduce our waste going into the landfill. So in terms of reducing materials going to the landfill, we first started off, do you have the way to scroll? We first started out with something on our webpage. Are you in charge of the webpage, Kim? Can you scroll down to the...
Depends if something's wrong with it, and then...
Oh. If you scroll down, you'll see a chart that hopefully educates, educates right there at members of the town of how they can dispose of items that we do not take at the transfer station. There are a few on there that we actually cross sites with the transfer station, but those mainly are things that cannot go into our landfill. So that's what we started out with. We also have Trash Tips down below, which talks about reducing mostly plastics and ways to reduce your use of plastics called Trash Tips. The next thing that we were focused on were strategies to reduce biodegradable waste. And we, as you all know, had a pilot program with 20 families, which we expanded via the town meeting up to 160 overall members of our community, which is 10% of the households. And Jerry is going to show us what everything looks like that's going into them.
Okay, we have 140 of these buckets that were purchased with the appropriation we got last year.
125 of them have been claimed, so there's 15 left.
And each one gets a little bag, which is biodegradable, and you fill it up, and you can bring it to the back of the transfer station outside. There are four, we call them totes, but they're buckets to put your material in. This is for in-home composting. We have no idea how many people are composting in their backyard. We'd like to get that information because we think that's valuable, and we're thinking about doing a survey at some time. There's a company called Renewal in Derry, their composting company. They come up once a week, and they take the material from the transfer station, bring it down to their composting. They also visit Tucker's and one other restaurant in town.
Blue Loon.
Blue Loon to take their compost down. We're trying to encourage others to do it, and there's a group called Kirsarg Climate Action. They got a grant where they want to talk to the larger institutions, the hospital, Colby Sawyer College, and the restaurants to get more, get more of the commercial activities involved in this.
To date, we have diverted, as of last month, 10 and a half tons of food scraps from the waste stream, probably up to a little over 11 tons by this month. The other third goal that we had was to improve recycling of plastic waste. So the town was very generous in taking over the rotaries, taking of the film number four plastics to Hanaford. So Hanaford is now recycling all of our plastic bags from the transfer station. And we've been communicating with Hanaford about how they're using that plastic and other ways that they are working to reduce plastics in the store, which is a very interesting conversation. The other recycling endeavor we've had is styrofoam collection, which was done just last week. And we collected 100 pounds of styrofoam. When you think about styrofoam, that's a, that's a lot of styrofoam. In fact, we actually collected two times more than we thought we were going to collect. So that left poor Bob Harrington to get rid of it and take it over to Guilford, where it is transformed into building materials for insulation.
If you look up on the screen, you can see, you can see the, you can see the styrofoam that we collected. It was only two hours. We got about 60 vehicles, but we were overwhelmed by the amount that we got.
Can you go up, Kim? There.
And we were busy the whole two-hour day. Many people said, well, why don't you do it again? And we'd like to do it again. We don't know when, but we hope to. And Meredith has a, excuse me, the Town of Guilford has a large machine that compresses, pulverizes this material, and then it turns it into a form of insulation that is then sold to companies for insulation. So the Town of Guilford's been very, that's a picture of what it turns into. The Town of Guilford's been very cooperative and very helpful. That machine costs about $50,000, but they've been very willing to accept material from other towns.
The fourth objective that we had as a committee was to educate residents, which started with us educating ourselves about what direction to take with recycling. And to that, and we invited people from New London Hospital, Colby Sawyer College, Lebanon Solid Waste Committee, Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission, and the Center for Eco-Technology to come and talk to us about best ways, best practices in educating and waste reduction. At town meeting, we passed out a little educational pamphlet to tell residents of the town exactly how their taxpayer dollars were paying for waste reduction and diversion, as well as how much it costs to transfer our waste to Berlin. We had two events, educational events. We had an Earth Day event at the library, and we had a compost class right here at Whipple Hall, a couple, 28th of September, and that both were very well received, and we want to continue educating residents because we're still getting lots of really good questions about what residents can do to reduce waste. And lastly, we are trying to continue to explore efficient waste reduction in town and also regionally, because we can see that bringing our food scraps to Derry is a really faraway place. We went down there for a field trip, and we were, we were kind of surprised at how far Derry really is when you, when you're going to a place that's not right off the highway, that's back in, in the small towns. So we're, we're exploring multi-town partnerships and seeing if there's some way that we could perhaps bring our composting closer to home. So that's what we've done in the last year, and just for a quick look at the future. Do you have that? Do we have that?
They have that. It's not up on the board.
Oh, it's not up on the board?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, we want to continue the collection of food scraps and maybe increase that by 10% or 20%. Hanaford's been a great partner because they take the plastic film waste to Portland, Maine, and they get it to Trex. Trex turns it into decking material or outdoor furniture, and they've been very helpful. We had, we met recently with the lead sustainability officer for their holding company, and they want to, and we're trying to encourage them to be more innovative. We're all familiar with the clamshell type of box that contains lettuce and other, they want to maybe put tan packaging material in the base, just have a clear view on the top, and do this in maybe 2024, New London, Hanaford could be a model store to roll this out in. They are also impressed with the work we're doing with the Waste Reduction Committee and the Kirsarg Climate Action, and also their manager, Peter Monagle, has been very cooperative in terms of recycling and promoting this. Bob, Bob Harrington comes to our meetings and has some good ideas all the time, and recently talked to somebody about collecting books. You know, what do we do with all our old books? Library can only take a few, if any, but Bob has come across a company that may be able to take, take old books, and that's a good thing. We also want to continue to look at newspaper. We've gotten a lot of feedback about people were upset that we didn't recycle newspaper.
All paper.
All paper. But it's a, it's a complicated market, and you have to really make it such that it's attractive to the person that accepts it, so we'll be exploring that this year.
It might mean sorting, sorting different types of paper.
Like newspaper, and then other paper, and stuff like that. We want to continue to work with the hospital and the college. We found that from the hospitals, they take all their food waste, and they grind it up into a big machine and pump it into the wastewater treatment plant, and it goes down to Sunapee for final removal. And we thought, well, maybe there might be a better way of doing, you know, handling that kind of waste. At one point, Colby Sawyer College sent their waste to Spring Ledge Farm, but after a while, I think Spring Ledge Farm had problems with animals and stuff like that, and they stopped doing that. But we are working with the sustainability people at Colby Sawyer to see how we can do a better job of composting. I guess our observation is people like the idea of waste reduction, and people want us to continue to do this and to be more expansive in kind of the waste reduction that we can do in plastic and composting. So going forward, I think our budget will be the same or a little less than it was last year. The major cost is the cost for renewal, taking the buckets every week. I think the annual projection might be around $5,700, and then we spend about $2,000 on advertising. So that would be kind of our plan going forward. I want to mention that I talked to Bob, had a brief conversation with Bob Harrington, and he said if we go over the budget in our renewal composting, maybe the solid waste revolving loan fund could pick up some of that extra cost, so. Do you have anything else you want? Do you have any, somebody said, do you have any answers for my questions, or do you have any questions?
Well, I'd like to say thank you so much. What you all have done is truly amazing, and the success of the program is beyond belief, really. Thank you. I know it's been a lot of work, and you've done a great job, and I hope you will continue to do that.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions. I don't, Jeri, Bill, would you like to ask Jerry anything?
No, I can just say that it's been a real pleasure working with this group, or at least sitting in on their work. I don't do the work, I just listen and try to support what they're doing. But I think in a very meaningful way, where this is an activity that is making progress for the town, and you don't mention the savings, but every ton that we don't put into the landfill is a ton we don't have to pay for, for taking it away. So there are savings as well as spending that goes on with what you're doing.
Yeah, well, thank you. I think it's $55 a ton to dispose of the waste, so. We did have a field trip over to Wheeler Brader Technologies in Pennacook. I think you know about that. Maureen mentioned the cost of taking the material down to Derry. We are exploring maybe other options locally with a local farm or some other institution that may want to consider something like this, but it's very preliminary. But we're not married to renewal, you know, that's just one vendor, but there might be some other opportunities, so.
So you did have a question about funding, and $12,000, can that be added to the transfer station budget? Is that, does anyone have a problem with that, or any thoughts?
Well, I thought, I just heard you add some numbers up, Jerry, that looked like closer to $10,000.
It's, it's not going to be any more than it was last year, and it could be less, and...
Remember, last year, we had a special article for this, and we funded it out of the unfunded balance, so this will be in addition to the operating budget. So I would just urge us to be as thrifty as we can in what we, what we're proposing.
Yeah.
So if 10 will do it, I would...
That sounds reasonable, and, and we do have this solid waste revolving loan fund in case we might go over it a little bit, but...
Yeah, it'd be great if you went over it, because we had more users, so that'd be fantastic.
Yeah. And one thing we like to do is a survey of the people to find out what the level of interest is, what other ideas they may have, who's doing backyard composting. We have no idea how much, who's doing that, and how much tonnage that might be, so.
Sure.
Okay, well, thank you.
Do you have any questions? Nope?
Thank you.
Thank you, really. Bob Brown? You're here for a variety of reasons.
What's that?
You have several things you want to talk to us about?
Oh, golly, yes. Stop me when you've had enough.
Okay.
I wanted to start just quickly by giving a quick update on the bog walkway project because some of that's going to have a lot to do with our budget request and some other things that we'd like to talk about. But at this time, the spruce loop, which is the smaller western loop, is completely refurbished with new walkway material, either the aluminum perforated fiberglass walkway or a new design of wood. And it's wider, and we have railings where we determine railings where necessary. So that is pretty much done. And we have a lot of people to thank. We have had some tremendous volunteers. It surprises me, like last week, we had another fairly large load of lumber come, delivered right to the trailhead, and you send out a message, you know, how many people would like to spend the next three hours carrying heavy lumber a third of a mile into the woods? And surprisingly, five or six people show up, so. And again, so it's that, in that respect, it's been great. We want to thank our trail intern, Dawn, who has really done a tremendous job. He has skills that we didn't know that he had in terms of carpentry, and if you go in there and look at the quality of the workmanship on the wood part that he has built and actually improved the design on, it is pretty impressive. We had a bog awareness day with over 130 people came just to look, see, and some made small donations, but it was more an educational thing. A large number of those people, not surprising, were out-of-towners, but what surprised us and continues to surprise us is how many people who live in New London, for a lot of years, have never been into the bog. And we hear that every day. So we now are faced with Tundra Loop, which is the loop to the east. It is about twice the linear feet. The good news is that some of it is above water level, and it's more like a walk in the woods. It will need minimum walkway, but there are sections that will require aluminum about half as much as we did on spruce loop, so that's... So that's good news. The aluminum is wonderful, but it's really expensive. And that's been our biggest fundraising challenge. We are now going into our third year of private fundraising. And, you know, it's interesting. We have never done this before. And we've had some really great successes, and of course, with that comes some disappointments. The first go-around, we needed about $86,000. We raised about 53, and fortunately, the balance was made up by the Mary Had Ed Fund, which allowed us to complete the Phase Two instead of Three. Now, we need to raise about $70,000 to finish Phase Four, which will be some aluminum but a lot of wood. And that's our challenge. We continue to fundraise. We need, in round numbers, about $70,000. We have raised 23. It's going slower. We are searching harder and harder for prospective donors. There've been a lot of generous people out there, companies, foundations. We have tried to do a lot of advertising, but we said from day one that every cent we took in, private donations, would go into the Bog Walkway. In other words, it would pay for materials, it would pay for a minimum amount of labor that we pay our intern. But we wouldn't use it for ads or promotional, we'd figure that out some other way. And we have tried to really search as best we can. Free ads and promo is really great. And we were very lucky to be able to work out a program with the Yankee Cable Network. They did two programs on the bog, which were wonderful. I mean, it's better than anything that we could have purchased or had the ability to organize. And we're using that a lot. But the long and the short of it is, we have about another 45 days before we have to make a decision about what we're going to do for next year. And, you know, the easy thing to say is, I just put it off for a year. But, you know, this will be year five. And our concern is that we're going to lose momentum, enthusiasm. We need to keep this rolling. And I think we can do it. You'll notice in our budget request for '25, we had a significant increase. Typically, the Conservation Commission's budget request is in the range of 18, 20,000. A lot of different things happen with that money. Sometimes we don't use it because we do request things associated with land acquisition. And if that doesn't happen, then we don't use the money and it's not spent. We have used it all last year. And although we've been trying to keep most of the bog work separate, you know, there's always a little bit of overlap. But the reason we are asking for a $10,000 increase, which to us is huge, I know when you look at the whole budget, $10,000 doesn't look like much, but it's a lot to us. And it's about a 50% increase, so it's certainly significant. But that is basically to replenish lumber supplies that are down and to catch up on some maintenance. We do have 32 miles of trails to maintain in town. Now, a lot of it's a walk in the woods. You know, that maintenance is picking up branches, cutting down the occasional tree that comes down. But then you go to places like the bog, and it's a major undertaking to build the type of pathway that you need to have. So that 10,000 is basically catch up and to have some materials on hand. We have started to stockpile lumber for next spring, get it into the bog while the weather and the water level is favorable in the spring. It's not so easy to walk in and out of there. So we have some materials sitting there, up on sticks, drying. By no means all of what we need, but some. So we're starting with that. Dawn Bartlett has agreed to come back next year, which is really good news. So he will be doing the bulk of the wooden walkway along with other trail maintenance. So that's what the 10,000 increase is all about. When we look at the cost of doing the bog, and the reason I bring this up is because we need some alternate funding. And we have discussed and looked at the wisdom of, you know, at-town meeting, when the article comes up that includes the Conservation Commission budget, to request an increase, make a motion to increase it $40,000. You know, I'm not sure that's going to be real popular. We have considered a separate warrant article that keeps it separate. You know, that might be more attractive. But the problem with town meeting in March is that the money for the aluminum, we really need it February, some of it. So it's not going to be available. So what do we do? And, you know, the obvious topic comes up is, can we go back to the Mary Had Ed Fund and ask for 42,000, up to 42,000, to cover what we need? It looks like we will have about 23,000, and I hope we'll get a little bit more in the next couple of months. We need just over 40,000. The good news is the cost of the aluminum, you know, a year and a half ago, there were six price increases in one year for aluminum. And nobody could even quote a price. So we placed our order in good faith based on what the prices were on that day, knowing that the actual price is not determined until the mill puts the material on the truck and the invoice is cut. And we were very fortunate that our supplier shared with us a price decrease of over $5,000. So that helped. And now pricing looks relatively stable. But in our numbers, we have put in about a 5% contingency because who knows what's going to happen? And we don't want to end up, you know, not being able to do the last 200 feet of the So I'd like to get your input. But right now, in the Mary Had Ed Fund, there is, in round numbers, as of September 18th, just over $500,000. Of that, 225 is committed to the Low Plains Land Acquisition Project, which we are working on. It's been a long time, but we're hoping that will close. So that leaves about 275. So that would be 42 out of that, which still leaves quite a bit of money in there.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure there's that much. Do you, can you give us, if that, did that number come from Joe Cubitt?
Yes.
I have $108,000 in my notes.
I didn't bring his memo, but I have, it does confuse me for, you know, it's been, what, eight or nine years since that was formed? And we used to get one number. Now we get two numbers. And I don't quite understand, and it's a big difference. It's about 100,000 difference between the two.
Well, Bob, the big difference is between what's actually been spent and what's been approved. So the Low Plains money still has been approved, but it hasn't been used yet.
The number of 500, correct. That includes the 225. And, you know, we're hoping that isn't going to not happen. So that would leave, if those numbers are correct, that would leave a balance of 275. But you're, but you're looking at a different number.
I am.
Okay.
Janet.
I can't explain that. I have his message, and I will certainly confirm. What number are you looking at?
Well, I have $108,000. And we've given $50,000 to the Bog Walkway so far. That's the memo I have on this. So.
Janet?
Go ahead.
Maybe rather than trying to figure out here what the, that bigger number is, it's greater than $40,000.
Right.
So at least for the purposes of tonight, I would propose for discussion here at least that we commit another $42,000 of the Mary Had Ed Fund to complete the bog and hopefully in so doing also find a way to give some recognition to the significant contribution that fund will be made. But I can't imagine many better uses of that money than this. And so rather than trying to figure out all the accounting tonight, I would just want us to think about whether we believe that contributing and having, or taking another 42,000 from that fund makes sense to meet the needs that Bob's described.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I just, you know, the other thing, point of this, though, is you have to get the Recreation Commission to agree to it. Have you spoken to them about raising the funds?
Yes.
Because.
And they are, they are in support.
Okay. Well, I am as well. I want to see this project finished, and I understand that you need.
And we'll certainly check the math with Joe and.
Yeah, I know we have enough.
Yeah, right, right.
We need to have a firm figure.
That would solve a big problem. And, you know, we keep looking at the definition of that fund, the two parts. And, you know, part one, trail maintenance, I mean, this project is absolutely spot-on what it was intended to do. So that's good news. And, you know, frankly, if we did not have the Mary Had Ed Fund, we would not have been able to do this project.
Right.
I mean, simple as that. As hard as we've worked on fundraising, you know, it goes slow.
Sure.
And, you know, some people think we failed at it, but, you know, to come up with 70,000 plus, I don't look at that as a failure. It would have been nice to be more, but as someone told us early on, if private fundraising was easy, everyone would be doing it. So.
So we need a motion to approve $42,000 to be.
Bibi, are you okay?
Yes. I actually just had a conversation with my father about this recently, about the Mary Had Ed Fund, who, you know, he knew Mary Had Ed, so did I. This is something that she would absolutely love. So yes, I'm so moved.
Okay.
Second.
Is there any further discussion, any questions, anything? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do you have any questions on the operating budget?
I do.
Okay. Go right ahead.
One hand giveth and the other taketh. One of the things that we've been doing with all the departments is trying to get things tightened down a bit, Bob. It's another difficult year for, I guess it's always going to be with inflation at what it is. And the Conservation Commission numbers are quite a bit larger than other departments in terms of use. And you just heard me say to the Waste Reduction Committee that I would favor reducing their money slightly. And in your case, I think for two things that have contributed to this increase, one is $3,000 more for the intern, which you might want to address why that's gone up. I'm glad he's coming back. And then second of all, a one-third increase in your so-called annual appropriation. And so between those two, I'd like to see the total reduced by $3,000 or $4,000 to get you more in line with what other departments have been asked to do.
That increase of $10,000, that request, was really specific to intern, both labor and materials. And that is for trail maintenance. And we like not to defer maintenance. We try to keep bridges, walkways, and so forth in A1 shape so we don't have issues with injuries and so forth. And that was one of the driving forces of doing this project in the bog. You know, with COVID, we know trail visits are up four to five times. A lot of people came out that weren't accustomed to walking, and we had people falling. And that's really a bad situation. So we didn't actually plan to do this. You know, it would have been very easy not to do this project or, you know, do it on a lesser scale. But we were concerned about providing an enjoyable event for people and a safe, a safe environment. So, I mean, we will work with what we have to work with. If, you know, the 10 becomes eight or whatever, then we'll adjust accordingly.
Later in this meeting, we're going to try to finalize our proposed budget for the Budget Committee. But I certainly am going to take the position that we need to reduce this somewhat because I think we can't ask other departments to do so and not also ask the Conservation Commission to do so.
Well, and there's nothing to say that we won't continue with fundraising efforts. You know, we just, we don't want to order material not knowing if we have the money. So, you know, if we can, and the lumber portion of it, percentage-wise, is much less expensive than the aluminum. So, I mean, we will, we'll certainly live with that.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Okay. Bibi, did you have any questions for Bob? No. Okay, Bob, you had some nominations you wanted to make to the Conservation Commission?
I'm sorry?
You have a couple of nominations you want to make?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I didn't mention with us tonight, from the Conservation Commission is Michael Kennedy and a new member, Jim Dexter. And of course, Ace comes to these as well. We would like to recommend that Jim and another person who couldn't be here tonight, David Hollinger, who has also expressed interest. They have both come to meetings, they have come to workdays, and have shown a genuine interest in, you know, helping out as best they can in time allows. So we would very much like to see both of those folks appointed members.
So Jim Dexter is a full member and David Hollinger is an alternate member?
Right.
Is that right?
Right.
Do I have a motion to approve these two gentlemen? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Anything else that you wanted to bring up?
No, we're going to talk about CIP at another time.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you. So does anyone have any public comments they'd like to make about anything that is not on our agenda? Bob?
You run a good meeting, by the way. I like that. Efficient. My name is Bob Bowers, and I am a member of, I'm a resident of New London. I have a few questions about the last meeting on October 26th, the answers to which would also be helpful to New London residents. First, the contract proposal from Colliers, which you approved, states that there are to be five phases which will be addressed. The contract price of Phase One, site selection and concept design, is $40,000. If each phase is priced at the same, this would be a $200,000 contract. Have you or Kim acquired information that sets forth that complete price? And if so, what is that projected cost? And if not, will you do so and report it to us at your next meeting?
You want to address that? Okay.
No, I, we have not looked into the entire contract price. We could, but I haven't been directed to do that.
Okay.
Would you be willing to have her check that and report at the next meeting what that total price might be?
I think that's a waste of time until we see what the results of the first phase are.
Okay. So you won't even ask?
I'd rather have the first phase done.
Okay.
If we ask, then we have to bring it here and have a discussion. I think one step at a time is fine for me.
Seems strange, but fine. Seems strange, but fine.
I I think that we, I think, I I agree that it might be a waste of time at the moment because we might decide we might not need them for the next phases after that. It might be a no or go kind of a decision once they finish that first phase. Maybe they might give you kind of a rough order of magnitude for, might be a good idea for us to have in the back of our head, but I don't want to take up a lot of your valuable time either, Kim. So just my thoughts.
I think in the in the material that we have, they gave us an estimate of what typically a project like this costs.
Oh, for the total project now, but I think you're just talking about their services.
Their services.
But I think that was also there as an item. I didn't bring all that with me tonight.
If it's there, could I get that? Okay. Second, with regard to the Buick Building, it was unclear what the selectmen will require of Colliers. The residents and voters would like to know and would like a report from Colliers setting forth, one, what in fact could be done at the Buick Building to reasonably meet the police department's essential needs while simultaneously making a list of what needs and wants cannot be met in a renovation? And two, what would be done and the cost to do so to renovate the Buick Building for other purposes if the police station is moved to a new location? Will the selectmen require Colliers to produce that information?
I think, Bob, we need to find a location first and whether or not that'll be feasible before we really do a deep dive into Buick. I I think you're way ahead of us.
So you don't think it's important to know those things?
I definitely think it's important to know those things. I mean, there are a number of things that we can do and how we can achieve using it for a variety of purposes. But until we find out whether or not we're going to move the police department, I I think it's moot at this point.
Okay. I just, okay, I thought that you would want to know whether that would work before you decided whether to move, but, okay. Third, what parcels of land did Chief Cobb show to Mr. DeLuzio last Thursday, which he referred to in an earlier meeting? And which of the three to four parcels, as proposed in the Colliers contract, will the selectmen be asking them to evaluate?
I I don't know which one she showed them.
Do you?
No.
I think she drove around town and showed and pointed out several. They did not do, all it was was a windshield tour. It's probably the same suspects that you, your committee that you were on last year recommended, I would assume.
So where, maybe you haven't reached this point. Where are we in terms of what the three to four sites they would be doing, looking at?
I suspect that'll be on a future agenda. There's nothing, it's not on the agenda tonight. They've done no work for us yet.
Okay, so you haven't made any decision on what they would look at?
No.
Okay. And finally, this is just a procedural one, and I'm sure you'd do this anyway, but will all selectmen meetings, including work sessions, related to Colliers and its contract be held in open public session with video recording and with adequate public notice posted on the town calendar?
I'm not sure all of them would be video recorded, but unless we have them here, they they can't be.
Right, the only way to have them video recorded is to have them here.
But they're all open sessions. The public will be notified. Certainly make sure that they are posted on our website.
Okay, so even the work sessions, if there were, they would be sent out.
We've always posted those on the website.
They were always sent out as, Kim, I appreciate very much, is sending them out now with the, on her, on her list so that it would, they would be adequately noticed that I wouldn't have to get up at 6:00 in the morning to check the calendar. Is that?
Well, Bob, come on.
I haven't, I haven't been up at 6:00 in the morning in a long time.
Yeah, but we will, we make sure that our.
Okay, I just.
24 hours in advance, it will be noticed. Okay?
24 hours in advance is the required statutory. I mean, I'm looking for notice sufficient for people to actually be aware that the meeting's taking place. No? You can't do that?
Bob, it's hard to know whether or not everyone's going to be available, whether the selectmen will be available to meet at certain times.
I I think Bob is saying he wants me to email people because, right, Bob?
If Colli, if you're meeting with Colliers, there are contractors that presumably has to put it into their schedule.
What Bob is pointing out is 24 hours is the legal requirement. People used to have to go to a bulletin board at the post office or to the town office. Now they can look online, but what Bob is saying, he'd prefer not to have to look online. He wants me to email, like I do agendas.
Yeah, well, I think it would be important, yes.
Right, so, but there is, it always is posted at least 24 hours. We try to do more. It's unusual that we actually do the minimum 24. But I do try and send out emails. Do I have an email list of more than 100 people and anybody who wants to be on it? Feel free to email me. I'll put you on it. But we don't, that does help people. They don't have to go on their computer and look at the town website. They could look at their email.
It's just, I I raise it because there were three work sessions that many of us didn't even know about until they were over, but so.
Right, but they were posted.
Yeah, no, they were. They were probably posted. I'm not saying that.
About that. We do want to make sure everything is legal and on the up and up.
I do. Very good. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And I look forward to you moving forward with this and maybe we'll have more information.
Thank you, Bob. Are there any other public comments? We'll let you leave, Bob. Go ahead. Thank you. Okay, all right, we have a due diligence report from Jones and Beach and with regard to Old Dump Road and Little Sunape Road. Bill, what did you originally have in mind?
Yep, thank you. My original and continued interest is in making sure that we know what uses might be able to be used for town-owned land that may be underutilized at this point. And one of the ones, the two, the two plots on Little Lake Sunape Road and Stump Dump Road were two of those that came to my attention totaling about 10 acres. I think we, apropos of just the discussion around the Colliers, we asked Jones and Beach to do things in small steps rather than taking on the whole project. They've come back with their initial report to us. I think it would be valuable now to ask the project engineer on this project to come and talk to us at a future meeting, maybe our meeting at the end of the the month for the benefit of the public. I think it was clearly pointed out that the smaller lot that's really part of Buckland Beach really has no other use. It's basically wetlands and the other use for such things is is parking or running conduits of one sort or another would require substantial work with the water condition. So I think we can eliminate that. But the larger lot where the existing stump dump sits, I think it's got some very interesting information there and particularly for potential future uses in waste management and in energy. So I would encourage us to talk to the engineers, ask more questions about that and see, open our minds up a bit to what we might be able to do to use that land more effectively in in the longer term. This is not something for this year. This is a, you know, '25, '26 project. It is clear, incidentally, that from this report to me at least, that this preliminary report, that it would not be a site that could be used related to water capacity issues, which I'll report on when we get to our committee reports tonight. But I think for some of the things that Maureen and Jerry were talking about and certainly in terms of possible site for solar, solar panels, ground mounted solar panels, could be quite interesting. So can we, can we suggest that they come on November 30?
Sure. You good with that? Okay. All right. Lynn, did you want to talk to us about bond anticipation bids?
I do. So as you know, we've been paying for the renovations on the space in here, using money from the general fund. And we've been approved by the bond bank for the full amount of the bond, but that won't fund until February. In the interim, we do have payments that have to be made. So we are going out for a bond anticipation note, which will get paid off when we get the full money from the bond bank. They actually took care of the legwork on this. And the bids that came in were from Mascoma, Bangor Savings Bank and Bar Harbor Bank and Trust. And Mascoma was by far the lowest at 5.5% with no origination fees. And I'm just asking that you approve that bond anticipation note. The documents would be available to sign at your very next meeting. It would fund on December, yep, December 6th and then basically go back out the door to the county, but for their tax payment. And that's all.
Any questions?
I don't think so. I guess just a, just a procedural question for the newbie is sort of, how long does it usually take to have a, to to get a bond funded? I mean, have you, is the, is the, has this been delayed?
No.
By, not, not, but, not by us, but by.
No.
Okay.
Um, if you go out to a regular bank, they can usually do it within 30, 60 days.
Yeah.
The bond bank only funds twice a year.
Okay.
Your application is due by October. They go out in January. They give you the money in February. And for the second part, it's, you have to give the application by April. They go out in June. You get the money July. So it's just, it's just a timing thing.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept or, I don't know, accept the 5.5% through Mascoma Bank?
I move that we accept the proposal from Masoma Bank for a bond anticipation note to be funded in December.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Kim, you wanted to talk about dispatching fees.
Right. I see. I wrote 2023. This is 2024 dispatching fees. We base the, our fees on a combination of calls for service and also a $3,000 user fee. Our member agencies are Newberry, Sunape, Sutton, Wilmette, and of course, New London. The rates are set out in the chart that I posted online and that you also have. New London is up about 4%. Newberry is up 5.19%. Sunape is down 1.52%. Sutton's up 3.5% and Wilmette is 1.7%. And we use a three-year average on the calls for service. So that tries to, that's an attempt to try and keep wide swings. Sometimes a town will have a lot of calls for service or conversely, a lot less. So this way, we use a three-year average, which is kind of a common way to do it. So I would ask that, or I recommend that you approve the calls for service for 2024 and we can let our, the other towns know so that they can use those amounts in their budgeting.
Okay. Bibi, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question. Looking back, 2021, we paid about $310,022, $327. Now we're up to $388. Do you, do you know the, kind of the, the bulk of the reason of that increase?
The increase in the budget?
Huh?
The increase in the budget?
Yeah.
Yep. We added a fifth dispatcher. So that was one of the increases, the biggest one.
So personnel expense, pretty much?
Personnel is generally, yeah.
Okay.
Bill, you have any questions?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the 2024 dispatching fees?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we need to, Pine Hill Ski Club has asked us once again if we could, if they could use town-owned land for parking. This is off of Mountain Road in New London. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about this? They do this every year.
Okay.
And a lot of people cross-country skiing.
Right.
Off Mountain Road, so.
So they just need permission from us to.
To park on our land.
Okay.
And they give us a certificate of insurance as well.
Oh, okay, okay.
And we've got an area where it's easy for them to use and easy for people to park.
Gotcha.
Okay. Any questions?
I move that we approve the request of the Pine Hill Ski Club to use the town property for cross-country skiing this winter.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We're going to finalize the 2025 budget so we can turn it over to the Budget Committee. And I think, Bill, you had some thoughts on this?
Well, I think you have in front of you a, an outline that I prepared a couple of days ago to help myself. And then I reviewed it with Lynn and Kim this morning. We made a few changes to what's, what's here, but I think we'll let Lynn or Kim lead us through the various pieces here and see if we can come to agreement on finishing up our work on the budget for the time being at least and send it on to the Budget Committee. And then in January, it'll probably be back for reconciliation discussion.
Okay.
You want me to keep going or are you going to go?
So you can keep.
Start, you want to start with the operating budget?
So I think we need to put some more money into the executive account compensation placeholder. We have yet, not yet completed our review of individual salaries that were impacted by the wage study. And we still haven't reached determination on potential COLA for the employees for the period beginning next July. But at this point, it seems to me that perhaps adding another $50,000 to that item would be prudent. Hopefully, we won't want to use all of it, but I think it'd be prudent to add $50,000 more to what's the $100,000 that we already put in there to, in order to be sure we have enough funds when we do the detailed work, which will not happen until late in the process when we get a better idea of where, what the appropriate COLA will be and what other towns are doing and when we go through with Kim proposed issues related to wages. So that would be number one, which would be to add $50,000 there. You've heard me comment to Bob a few minutes ago that I would take out some of the annual appropriation. I think, you know, we have lots of, lots of property in town that we want to keep maintained well and so on. I think we have to ask everybody to tighten their buckles on this. And so I would propose that we take $3,000 out of the annual appropriation for the conservation. I think it's on page.
It's on 16 of your.
Page 16, thank you, of the, of the budget thing. It is line 014611-100-810. And I would reduce that by $3,000. I would, I would allow the increase in the cost of the intern to remain there.
Okay.
So that, what that would do is redo, is still increase that account by a little over 13% versus the 33% that they've requested. And then last but not least, I would provide funding for the waste reduction, as Maureen and Jerry suggested today. And I'm not quite sure where you want to put that. One suggestion I had is to add it to the solid waste budget since it sort of seems to fit there. So if we could add that line item, solid waste drives, it's called, is 01, it's on page 13, 014325650419.
That's our household hazardous waste.
Right.
Yep.
That's basically what we're doing with the styrofoam and the compost and so on. Seems like a good place to put it.
So how much?
Three, reduction, $10,000, I think, is what we were discussing earlier today.
Okay.
And recall, it was $12,000 last year. And then Kim has told us late this afternoon that we used to, need to take the $50,000 for the building asset management project that was in, proposed to be taken out of capital reserves and have to put that into the operating budget because it's not a legitimate use of the building maintenance fund. Is that stated accurately?
Yes, I think Joe Cubitt has told us in the past that that town buildings account needs to be for renovations and maintenance, not plans.
So I would add that to the appropriate.
So Lynn was going to put.
So Lynn was going to put a new line item, so your choices are either put it in the operating budget, or you could make it a special warrant article, you know, a standalone article. But it seems to make sense to put it in the operating budget.
What are we talking?
This is the $50,000 for the asset management plan that Phil Sherman and Bob talked about at the last meeting.
Yep.
I think there was general agreement that it's something we should do.
Yep. Okay. Removal from general government.
And so before we leave, first, the general operating thing, I would also just like to comment that, has everybody received the new version of the comparative statement?
Yep.
So at my request, I ask that the library budget be shown as a separate line below the line items that the selectmen can affect. Really, the effect is, we know that we can have on this, it's either to support it or not support it. But I thought for the purposes of, particularly with the budget review with the Budget Committee, that it would be useful to have that out separately so that we could see that, as I mentioned at our last meeting, the library budget continues to be significantly higher than any other department. And I would urge the Budget Committee to work with the library trustees and the library director to see if something can be done to bring that budget more in line with the rest of the town. So I asked Lynn to present it in a slightly different fashion so that we wouldn't lose track of that. But that doesn't, there's no decision to be made there, it's just commentary on why it's been repositioned on the sheet. I think that takes care of all of the general operating numbers, and I don't know, Lynn's over there calculating. Are you going to be able to tell us anything?
Yeah.
Or shall I keep talking and you're going to keep calculating?
No, I just have, and you just talked about.
Yeah?
And which number is that? 4.1%? So you have a general operating budget library?
Yeah, the number that was, was 8,211.
Yeah, 8,318,467.
Okay.
With a 6.1% difference.
So we're looking at a general operating budget before the library that we're going to send to the Budget Committee with a 6.1% increase. If we agree with all the things that we just talked about, or anything else that anybody wants to bring up. But I think after our all-day session, or our four or five-hour session, these were the only things that were left, that we, that I haven't heard any of you raise a hand before. Obviously, the biggest part of that is the $50,000 for the building assessment project. You know, we can make this percentage go down by putting it in a separate article, but I think that's just moving the chairs around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that, if we're worried about the percentage number, but it's still going to be $50,000.
Right. I'm good with this, and I'll be spending a lot more time with this.
I know you will, it's a...
So, I'm getting to know it very well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's where, that's where we are. I think we've, we did, I think, a reasonable job the, two weeks ago in that Friday meeting, and covered a lot of ground, so I would, I would, we'll just keep moving on here then. The library we can't affect. And the next thing is the transfers to the capital reserves. We asked Lynn to put a million dollars there as a placeholder. She's done that. She's spread it out among seven different departments, and so we can see it. Here's $150,000 in town building maintenance. That's the sheet that we just got here. $250,000 in fire vehicle fund, $100,000 in fire breathing apparatus, $50,000 in sidewalks, $350,000 in highway heavy equipment, and $100,000 in the library building maintenance. And those numbers, unless Lynn's calculator doesn't work, add up to a million dollars. That would replenish the major funds to the extent that there'll be positive balances at the end of 2025 fiscal year, assuming when we get to capital outlays, that we agree that that schedule is correct. So you have to put it in, you've got to take it out, put a million in.
So I just have some questions, because if I'm looking back at the previous years and last year, of course, you had to cut the number in half.
Right.
And I think, I believe Bob was going to ask for some money to be put in the Conservation Commission Fund. I think the page I saw was $75,000. And sewer, energy, where was the other one? The solar one. Which one is that one? The energy?
Energy.
Energy projects.
Aren't we, don't we have to, don't we have to put money into that fund?
We have enough money in there to, to what Jamie has said, if we were to make the decision to buy it.
Okay.
And the sort of general philosophy at this point, I think, is don't start, don't put more money in funds until you know you need it.
100%, yep. So that $135,000, I think, is the projected balance for that account?
Right.
Is sufficient?
From what they know now, but that hasn't been decided.
Right, they don't know the exact cost of purchasing the system.
Or whether they want to purchase the system.
Or whether they want to, right, but I guess, right.
The conservation thing is an annual discussion. When the CIP Committee, which I belong to also, talked about it, we agreed that the target should be much larger than has been in the past, because you're not going to buy much for $500,000.
Right.
On the other hand, you could put a dollar in, you could put in the whole million dollars.
Right.
And again, at this point, the Conservation Commission hasn't suggested to us that they have any projects that are in the near term.
Yep.
Ready to go. They're still working on low planes, which is coming out of the Mary Hadad Fund.
Yep.
So my inclination, I think, I said at the last meeting, and I said at the CIP, is that we keep a target there.
Yep.
Keep our mind on it, but not, again, put money in when we don't have any use, any way to spend it at this point. We have a balance of, what is it? Which page is the balance on?
366, I think I have.
341, 406, plus 25, plus interest.
Somewhere around there, 350,000.
It seems to me there's almost $400,000 there.
Okay.
They're putting in another 25 and taking it away from something else, doesn't seem to me to be the way to go, but that's...
Agreed.
For all of us and the Budget Committee to determine.
Right.
So the million dollars tries to get us back on track.
Yep.
From where we were last year. I think as a warning, I said this in a memo to both of you.
Yes.
I think that number will continue to go up to maybe a million two, a million three in subsequent years.
Mm-hmm.
But again, this year, we're still working through some of the issues that we couldn't deal with last year because of the very tight budget then, and so I think that's a fair place to be at this point. I'm sure that you'll talk about it more at the Budget Committee.
I'm sure that I will be. Okay. But as long as I can understand your reasoning, that will help me.
At some point, it seems to me, we want to go back to the question of establishing targets. We talked about this with the, with you, from the school board's point of view. We talked about it with the Budget Committee in our meeting with them back in June, and a subcommittee of the Budget Committee has been working on this issue also. I understand is going to make some recommendations on targets. I don't think we should probably take that up until we've heard what their recommendations are.
Perfect.
But we could, we could work on that tonight. No, okay. So then, if we continue on here on this path we're on, wherever that sheet of paper went now, here it is. We're down below, we've got the additional monies in general operating without the library. We have the library. We have the transfers to reserves of a million dollars. What's that increase now look like, Lynn?
That, what's that? That's in there, $10,000.
No, but what's the, what's the 11.3 now? Because you've, we've gone from up to 6.1 in the general, you have a, there's a percentage number, new percentage number here, right? Haven't you had a chance to get there yet?
With the library and the million dollars, you're saying?
Yeah. Library and the million dollars are the same, but now we've got a new subtotal here, right?
Right.
Of, because we've added $107,000, $103,000 to the operating numbers.
Right. That's what we're treating.
Yeah.
8.3 million for the library, 9,619,999 for the library.
So what's the new total?
The million dollars is 10,619,999.
Thank you. 10,619,999?
And that's without the capital outlays.
Right, right, okay, good. I was just trying to...
I didn't know, I applied for, but I didn't know.
I was just, as far as we had talked through then, the next thing is capital outlays. We need to take our sheet and update the $18,000 to add $4,600 for the money that back in our long session that we took, which we eliminated from the operating budget and took from the cemetery maintenance fund.
Yep.
And it needs to show here as an improvement, so that's...
Oh, okay, gotcha.
What, Bob Harrington had proposed a $235,000 roller truck. We have to decide whether we want to include that or not. It is not, it is currently not in here, but he did do that, and he does get an opportunity to talk about that some more, but...
225, 22600 is going to be...
We did not include that in our discussions. In general, when it goes to outlays, let me just go through briefly for you.
Can I back up? Back up. Cemetery, it's, we're reducing this 22.6 to 18,000? Is that what you said?
No.
You're talking in the operating?
I'm talking in this, my worksheet here.
So your worksheet, that 22,600?
Is being reduced.
Is made up of 18,000 for the maintenance of the old Main Street Cemetery?
Okay.
Taking trees down and brush?
Yep.
And then the 4,600 is the amount that was taken out of the operating budget, the maintenance cost.
Okay.
So we're going to use that fund for those.
Okay, thank you.
So on the outlays, you have Lynn's schedule, we have Lynn's schedule, bingo?
Yes.
With the column, yeah.
Got it.
And in that schedule on page 3, under highway equipment, there is a roll-off truck there of $235,000. There's been discussion as to whether or not we want to do that. It's still there. It's in Lynn's numbers, but we need to discuss that. And let me then also, we need to add the capital, the academy reconfiguration of $100,000 that we've put into the operating budget. We need to show that as, I mean, excuse me, in the, not the operating budget, in the town maintenance, building maintenance. We need to show that as a building number. And let me just, because we did receive the CIP, and we never talked about it and how it relates to the numbers that we have in the budget, just assure you that, how this all ties together. The library and the CIP were the same, $125,000. The town office roof and, was the same, at 87,500 or 88,000. The trucks in equipment vehicles for the highway department, $150,000 for a small dump truck, $341,000 for the large dump truck, and the roll-off truck were all also in the The $50,000 for main plant ventilation, the sewer plant was in the CIP. Numbers that the CIP Committee presented for the water district are not in our budget. That's, that's not our money, but as the CIP Committee said to us when they made the presentation, they did that so we would have an idea of what was being spent there, and that might be borne by the taxpayers. Under the fire department, was not in the budget material that was presented to us, was a $55,000 utility truck for the fire department next year, and Kim, you have a really up-to-date report for us on that.
Yes. Yes, that should stay in your, that will be in the budget for this year. The chief has informed me that he does intend to buy that in fiscal year 2025. So I have written in red pen on your sheets, $55,000 as an expenditure.
So that's, that's the one item so far that I've gone through here that was presented in the CIP that was not in the budget proposal the department heads gave us. And the office reconfiguration was there. When the CIP was presented to us erroneously, communications tower for the dispatch was listed in 2025, and it should have been listed in 2028. And last but not least, acquisition for land for the potential police facility was included in the CIP, but we did not include that, have not included that in any of our numbers. That, so the main things that are different from the CIP recommendations and what we've got in the budget are this utility truck, question about the roller truck for the highway department, or for the transfer function, or both, and the question of spending money for land acquisition. So I guess the question is, what is our pleasure in terms of the roller truck? And maybe Bob wants to speak to that. And otherwise, I think they are changes that just have to be made from a mechanical point of view.
Right, I think there was one other thing in the CIP, that was the $125,000 for the records management.
Ah, we're not going to lose that, yep. Yes, the CIP recommended, was recommended there, or didn't recommend, but recorded 125, remember, they don't recommend, they just are recording, $125,000 to continue the town records management project, and that has not been included in the budget, as Kim explained to us when we're going through the budget. She feels that the reorganizations of the space in the academy building is a higher priority than the records management at this point. So, how fast do you, Bob, do you want to talk about the roller truck?
Basically...
I know the story, but I got to let you tell it.
Basically, the roll-off truck would take care of paper, for one. That's the main reason I've been looking into it. The numbers come out that the truck is going to be a little bit more than a paper, the current way we do it, or we're doing it. But the, moving forward into the future, what I see is an opportunity, if we have the truck, we can start trucking our own steel from the Russian metal facility, our aluminum. Currently, we have a contract to do it now. So I see those numbers changing over the years. Essentially, I think the truck would pay for itself over a period of time. I don't, I put it in there that I used a 13-year comparison because that's currently what we do with a plow truck. I don't believe that truck would be 13 years, I think it would go much further, similar to a 10-wheeler. But I do see a potential for different recycling. A prime example is the foam collection. That's an item that could be used, you know, that truck could be used for, much easier to get it out of than guys climbing in the back of a 10-wheeler. The biggest thing is paper.
So Bob, my feeling is, it is a good idea for the future, but given the heavy amount of other trucks for...
Yep.
Needy as the plowing trucks and so on, and the following year might be a better place to bring it up again when we have a better idea where we are in some of the papers.
I'm perfectly fine with that, as long as it's something that, you know, people know we're trying to do something about the paper.
Time question as opposed to a long-term need. I think not doing it in 2025 would be helpful to the overall.
Yep.
Picture. So, there we are.
Any other questions?
I think that covers everything there. Lynn's busy doing numbers. While she's doing that, maybe you want to go over revenue or questions about, on the outlays? I think we're, the outlays will go down a bit because of the truck, but go back up a bit because of the reconfiguration thing. So Lynn's busy doing the calculation there. Excuse me?
Not your total budget.
So.
You want your total budget number?
Oh, fantastic, yeah.
It's 12,275,407.
Which is up a little over seven, 11%.
Thank you.
I've got a cough drop in here. And BB, to, you know, a point that I think you were starting to make, we will be taking more out than we put in next year, and that's why, you know, I cautioned us already, I mean, there are different accounts, but, you know, this isn't, this million dollars isn't going to get less. It's going to get more. And if we do the building assessment project, I'm going to guess that our high, town building maintenance number is going to significantly go up from what we're now showing. And, you know, the rest of, there's a lot of other small accounts here, and I think when you get to the budget committee discussion, you're going to find, they're going to suggest that we stop funding those accounts for a while because no apparent use, we're just accumulating money. I think one member of the budget committee has called it dead money. I don't know if he's referring to the cemetery account or what, but. Okay, the sewer fund, there's, there's no changes to that. So I assume that that bottom line's going to be slightly higher also now, though Lynn, right?
That, that was the total.
Oh, that was?
That's everything.
Oh, beautiful, okay. That's way down at the bottom of the page, okay. So it's up 10,000 dollars. So the total is going to be about 7.8% increase. Revenues.
Okay, revenues, as we know, it's early in the season here for revenues, but we are estimating an increase in the land use change tax to 50,000 dollars. That's a 10% penalty on land that is taken out of current use. The 10% is based on the fair market value. So we are increasing that to 50,000. Rooms and meals tax, we know it doubled this year to 400,000, but we're going to stay with, we typically get 200,000, so currently we are estimating 200,000. And the rest of the things really are not, we're not estimating any huge changes. You'll notice the bottom line change, amounts from fiscal year 2024, estimated revenues of 4.8 million dollars. Now we're saying 4.5 million, and much of that is in bond proceeds. In fiscal year 2024, we had 300,000 for the sewer bond proceeds and 186,000 for Whipple. So that's where most of the reduction is. And again, in October, when we, when you set the tax rate in October of 2024, 24, yes, you'll be able to look at these revenues again, and we'll have more information and they may change, hopefully up.
I don't know if either one of you saw in the inner town this week that somebody in the town of Sunapee at their meeting discussing the budget suggested that we determine what the town, that Sunapee determine what the revenues are and then build their budget around the revenues with no, with no consideration of taxes. So it was sort of a curious approach. So I would move that we adopt a budget of 12,275,407, as noted on the sheet, that the numbers that Lynn has been giving us, subject to minor clerical corrections if, when she gets to a bigger computer.
Okay. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
I had two, on this little sheet that I did, I had two other questions just to ask us that do not impact spending.
Yep.
One is whether or not it's time to hire a building inspector for these two large projects pending and with continued concerns from fire, you know, about the lifetime that occurs from, when now that we have to, we have to use the state fire marshal's office for major commercial or public family projects. I was thinking, maybe we might ask Jay and Adam and maybe Peter Nichols to take a look at that and see what, how that might impact or not impact future things like the planning board is talking to housing commission now about more de-tact ADUs and so on. Is it time now for us to finally do that and move, and that would be cost, I'd necessarily be able to charge the used building inspector back to the developers, but that we avoided doing that in this case, except to me when I asked about this problem.
The problem, of course, is that what happens if the building inspector's not around? You know, we grind to a halt because we kind of don't have the new processes in place. But I, seems to me it's time to ask Jay and Adam and, you know, maybe somebody like Phil Sherman to, and Peter to take a look and make recommendations to us for next year as to what we might do there. It never, it never comes up in the budget discussion because it's not a cost item that any department head's putting in. Then the other one I, is, I watch, there's Will in the back, I watch Will, I watch Adam, I heard Bob Bowers talk again about recording our meetings and so on. I'm wondering if we shouldn't be asking Kim and her staff to look at whether or not some of the technology activities that are related to recording our meetings and to routine computer questions and so on that we use a third party for, for the more complicated ones, whether or not the budget we currently have for technology staffing with Mike Williams is not being used very much, and we might try to reorient some of that money to providing some help to Will and to Adam and to being able to do more with recording our meetings and so on. I, I know Will enjoys all these meetings, but he has, he has a day job also. So that's just my thought that we, technologies came and went during our discussion, we never resolved very much about how we get our hands around that as an umbrella for the town, but it seems to be one place we might do, we already have money, is to ask Kim to begin to think about how she can, at least some of this audiovisual stuff and some of the, you know, related to, you know, computers in the office that somebody could easily handle, like, why, why can't I get on the internet today? That's just thoughts, we all need to discuss them tonight, I just, since they're on this piece of paper, I wondered why they were there. Or you may have thoughts.
With regard to the building inspector, I think that might be worthwhile looking, checking with other towns, that we might be able to share that position.
Right.
I think, you know, I think Sunapee already has one, or Newberry does.
Both of them do.
Both of them do, I believe.
Yeah. And, and perhaps there is something that we could partner with them as we do with our tri-town assessing. So I think that would be worthwhile. Regarding technology, I was under the impression that we would be able to come here and have a meeting and be able to turn it on ourselves. That's not going to ever happen.
That you could turn this on by yourself?
Yeah, without Will having to set it all up.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if, hard-pressed, I could go on my comput, my phone, I have taken pictures of all the setup, Will and Adam and I have gone over it several times. I wouldn't want to trust me, but I definitely think we need somebody, because even at, at planning board meetings, Adam's trying to deal with the computer, put things up on the screen. It would be helpful if somebody had it all set up when he came in.
Right.
And was able to do it. And the same thing here. And if conservation commission, there are a lot of other boards meetings that would benefit, and I don't think we could train all of the board members to, to set it up.
Do you think you could come up with a kind of a job list for that person? And I would, I see where, Bill, you just made a comment about an employee who can't get on the internet someday, so this could, this would be.
Yeah, I think, I mean.
Person that would help with the, all the department heads in the office with technology needs?
Yeah, currently, we just put a help ticket into VC3, and they're pretty quick about doing those kinds of things. I would see this person more as dealing with all of the AV things that we have.
Okay.
You know, when we buy, if we get a new computer, like a laptop, part of our contract with VC3 is they come and they set it up.
Okay, so we have somebody that helps.
Right. But being able to set all of this up for each meeting.
Got it.
Making sure it gets recorded would be helpful. I mean, Will might want to take a night off one of these days, miss a meeting. No, he's saying no, so maybe.
I think, I think you noticed that when we were, the last breakfast at Colby Sawyer, and I've been at some other events there since, they have somebody now who.
Oh, yeah.
Who, who does that and is.
Yep.
Made, according to Sue Student, a real difference, just in terms of making sure things work when they're supposed to work and not.
Yeah.
Putting the burden on somebody who has, has another job also.
But if we really start, like, energy committees here, conservation is on Wednesday mornings. You know, if we really want all of our meetings.
Add up all the meetings.
Televised in here, then we'd really have to have somebody. Housing commission, I mean, I think that'd be interesting to have housing.
But, you know, it's, I call it a technology question, Bob might call it a transparency question. Bob, Bob Bowers, so.
Okay.
School, the school had a person, when we had our community forum, there was somebody who did, and he moved the camera, he was able, during the meeting, he moved the camera.
Yep.
I don't think he was a full-time employee, I think I asked that once.
Trying to remember.
I forget his name, but anyway.
Yeah. We just, yeah. Okay.
Think about it, come back with a proposal. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. We good with all of that?
It takes care of the budget.
Okay.
For six weeks.
All right. Kim, do you have a town administrator's report?
I do. I went down to the Puritan back room in Manchester on November 2nd with Bob, who was given his Master Road Scholar, and it took Bob some years and more than 100 hours of classes in both road maintenance, planning, budgeting. And it's very, really, an achievement for Bob to get. I was really proud to be down there with him. Yeah, so, welcome, Bob. Secondly, the tax rate went out. Obviously, people have heard about it, and those who are on the Citizen News hopefully got this in their mailbox today. Cara was able to get it out, and it explains the tax rate process. And those people who are, who believe that we have made a mistake on the evaluation, how to apply for an abatement, people can come in the office, we'll be happy to help them out with that. So those went out earlier this afternoon, so check your email and see if you got it. And those who are not currently on the Citizen News, please email me and I'll get you signed up for it. That's all I have.
Okay. BB, do you have anything to report? Yes, I'm trying to find my very nice typed-up minutes that Jay sent me from the Fire Awards meeting, and of course, I can't find it, but I attended the Fire Awards meeting, and they talked a lot, it was the day after the trick-or-treating event, so they talked a lot about, you know, how that all went, and 2,500 people, they estimated to be on Main Street, closed down, and everybody thought it went very well. They talked about the fire truck hopefully being, it's being testing now, the new truck, they're testing it, hopefully it will come, be delivered. And this is terrible, because I promised Steve Ensign that I would do a good job reporting the, the meeting, but I'll submit the minutes. Anyway, I, I did that, the Board of Fire Awards, so that was interesting, just to see how that board works was really fascinating, and just to learn how the whole fire association works. I've been attending the interviews for the superintendent candidates for the school district, there's one going on right now, and that's been really interesting, meeting the three different candidates that are going to replace Superintendent Fetterberg. And then lastly, I attended the Newberry Board of Selectments meeting Monday night where they had a public forum to talk about doing a septic ordinance similar to Sunapee's, and it was very informative, very well-received, and they're considering developing an ordinance that they're going to put in front of town meeting in March. And it's, they talked about instead of not just having it in the shoreline overlay district, but having it for the whole town, about 1,000 houses. 300 a year would have to be monitored whether they were pumping out their septic tanks. So that's what I've been doing.
Thank you.
Bill?
Not only that, but BB has a day job too, and she's running a bunch of trainings for them. So I actually have a somewhat longer report from the water precinct meeting last Monday afternoon. Epstein's can tell me if I've got it right, okay? First of all, year-to-date usage through October is about 95% of what it was last year, so they're running below, and they're not surprised by that because of the lower irrigation this summer. Second of all, Jerry Coogan had asked that we inquire as to why they weren't getting the grants that were, the executive council and the governor had, grants like the executive council and the governor have approved this fall. And the answer to that is, they tried, and they weren't, they weren't, didn't make the cut. And in general, the feeling is that our needs aren't as desperate as the four grants that were made, and that we're a wealthy town and we can take care of our own stuff. Okay? Now, on the Main Street pipe thing, they're going to be reviewing the engineering drawings this week. They're going to meet again on the 20th of November because their engineer for the long-term capacity issue postponed his meeting, so they're having another meeting this month. They're going to review the engineering drawings. They intend to go out to bid in January, early January. They expect to get approval for the project, the bids back and the approval of the project at their March annual meeting, which is a week after our annual meeting. They plan to start work in April or early spring, depending on the snow and the frost and so on. They plan to finance this through the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank, and because they will not make the sale that you're doing for us, they'll be into the summer sale, but if they're going to start work sooner, they obviously are going to also try to use a bridge loan or anticipation notes to get them from beginning to July 10th, I think you said is when the sale is.
Yeah.
Yep. From, so that's, that's the story there, they're, they're moving ahead, they are somewhat optimistic that they'll be able to hold on to that, that schedule, Bob, so I assume that Rob and you have been talking about that, and I assume you and Rob have been talking about that schedule of starting in the early spring.
You said you tend to need recently.
Well.
Try to track it.
That's why it's good to be there. I think, but is that accurate from what you two heard?
Some legendary ways on the roof.
Well, I haven't, I haven't finished going through the, but that's, that's what I, that's what I wrote down about the water mains. A greater discussion that went on for some while, and of concern frankly to, to me, is that Paul Vance was from the planning board was also there with me, and we had an opportunity to engage with the commissioners, or two of the commissioners, one of them was away, regarding possible future, I'm reading now, so, possible future sources of water, and we were doing this in preparation for their engineer's report on November 20th, although they were not optimistic that there was going to be much new information that came out of that, that report. But the chair of the commissioners summarized things at one point during our discussion. things at one point during our discussion on Monday, saying that any, uh, capacity expansion is likely to be very expensive, and the goals and objectives of the precinct and the town of New London are now likely diverging. He outlined that the precinct's objective is to, quote, "locate a second source of water to meet the potential future needs of the precinct's existing customer base due either to the failure or diminution of the existing wells or increases in the summer peak use of water." I then went out on a limb and stated that the town's objective might be, in addition to what the precinct wants to do, to, quote, "provide water to new development within the precinct to encourage construction of affordable housing, either through more ADUs or projects such as Long Meadow Commons." That caused the commissioners to say they really are glad that we're having this discussion at this point, and they would like to come and sit down with us, and proposed that they come to our meeting on December 14th so we can talk through some of this together. But, um, clearly there is a diverging, uh, view of why we need more water at this, from their point of view, why we need more water. They believe it's to keep existing customers whole, and I believe it was fair to say that the Housing Commission and the Planning Board would find that to be, fall short of what they think the town needs to consider in terms of long-term, um, capacity. Um, that, um, I thought it was a sobering but worthwhile discussion, and I wrote, I actually wrote down on my little notepad here exactly what was said, so that I didn't just think I heard it. Karen? Yeah.
Sure, could you please? That'd be great.
Press the button, right? Um, my, my name is Karen Epstein. I was at the same meeting. Do I continue?
Yeah.
Okay, great, I guess, I'm sorry. So, we go to these, we attend these, not because we're like really bored or anything, but we want to hear like firsthand, and we live in the precinct. And what I heard in that discussion, to my ears, as a user, and I appreciate the fact that the precinct had, and I'm not speaking for the precinct, I'm just speaking to what I, what I heard. I appreciate their, their, well, I appreciate their appreciation that they have stakeholders who are the, the users and not potentially future users or new demands that's being put on the precinct. So I, I thought it was a really good conversation to start, because being in the precinct and you hear all this demand about wat, water and development, you just get concerned how your interests are being represented and balanced. So I just want to put that out there, that even though, you know, Bill took, heard it as diverging, and maybe that was said, I didn't take notes. I deliberately don't take notes because I'm here to absorb, not to necessarily like report back. But, um, so I just had a takeaway that I appreciate the fact that as a user, there's someone like really representing the users in this perspective. So I just wanted, wanted to share that. Thank you.
And Karen, I think, as I said here, that the town's objectives include the precincts, but may go farther.
Yeah.
I think that's, therein is the potential rub at this point. Um, uh, the chair used the word diverge, I used the words sync, they weren't in sync, but.
Yeah, I appreciate, so I, I think it was a really good conversation to maybe surface some of these different interpretations, uh, different places where people are, and we look forward to staying involved, even in, just sitting in the audience. I think it's important.
And thank you and your neighbors for, for coming. I mean, it's good to get more people there than just me. I know Peter couldn't be there on Monday, but, um, uh, but he, he's pretty good, and, and Paul Vance from the.
Yeah.
Planning Board is, is coming regularly, but it's a relatively small attendance and some very, very big issues being discussed. So I would encourage us to agree to have, invite them to come on the 14th.
Sure.
The nice thing about that timing also is that since we're doing a community meeting on the 15th, we'll be up to date on.
Right.
What the, what the conversation is.
Jerry, did you want to make a comment?
I'm Jerry Coogan. Um, when the precinct puts their funding package, you know, will they request any funding from the?
From the town?
Yes.
They have not, they did, I did not hear them suggest that they were going to ask the town for any money for the water main project. Um.
So the entire?
The town obviously will incur expense in terms of what, the activities that Bob has to engage to, you know, repair sidewalks.
Yeah, so the entire three point two million will be paid for entirely by the water precinct?
I don't know where you got the three point two million from.
That's the number I've heard from the.
They, they didn't issue, they didn't give any numbers the other night because they were wait, they had expected the engineer's drawings, update on the drawings to be presented, and the engineer couldn't make the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You know, Jerry, as it is, the town pays, all residents of the town of New London pay a third of the water precinct's budget. So, I'm sorry, we, we pay something on the water though, don't we? No, okay.
People in the water precinct pay property tax.
And that's it?
And the water users pay for the water they use.
All right, sorry, I misspoke.
But it's the sewer that pays one-third.
One-third and two-thirds by the users, okay. Okay, any other comments?
I have a question for you, Bill. Did they talk at all about how they're going to commu- communicate this? Because I, I had someone from the New London Inn call me the other day and ask about the, the status of that, because they're booking weddings out in, for next summer, and they want to be able to tell the people that are booking weddings at the New London Inn that there might be a large traffic issue on Main Street.
Well, I, I think BB, you know, this would be good, we can ask them this when they.
Okay.
They come, but they're, they're talking about doing it in three stages.
Yeah.
They're talking about never having that much open at any one time. They work at several hundred feet at a time, maybe. Um, the police chief ought to be here also because of the, it's the question of traffic management and so on.
Yeah.
But their intent is not to cause businesses on Main Street to have to change their operations. There may be some inconvenience at some place along the, the way. Obviously, um, they're going to work hard to miss, not, not have the hospital, have Main Street, uh, torn up in the middle of hospital days.
Yeah.
But, and Bob, I sure will get closer to this once they do this, but it was, that discussion was more just, um, sort of a reaffirmation of what we'd heard before, but more specifically, because I was asking the question about grants, and then they.
Yeah.
Went into the question, the description of how they plan to finance this through the bond bank.
Okay.
And the police chief has met with the water precinct commissioners about the traffic issue. Emily has met with them, yeah.
I, I think their intent is to try to make that as painless as possible, but, you know, if you've ever been in a area where the, um, pipes have been torn up in the middle of the street, well, these aren't in the middle mostly, Bob, they're on the side, right?
Under the sidewalks.
Um, yeah, it, it's disruptive, but hopefully it'll be as, you know, as little disruption as possible. One of the things that they would say, the bidders might come in and say, we'll put two crews on this and start at each end and meet in the middle. But they waiting, you know, until you get the drawings, go out to bid, you don't know what somebody's going to come back with.
Okay. Bob?
You probably heard this already anyway, Bill, but I know one of the things Rob was saying is they were going to start at both ends, possibly work. Yeah, but they were going to stop and not do a section until hospital days is over, and then come back in and start over to connect the two. That was one of the things, one of the plans.
A lot of it's going to be money though, I think, Bob. You know, when the contractors look at it, they may say, it's fantastic, this is a small job, we'll get in and get it done. Or they may say, well, don't tell us to stop, we don't want to have to, you know.
That is correct.
Yeah, so we'll see. Hopefully, very soon, we're going to have some answers on this part of it.
All right. No, no, that's stuff we need to know. Um, so we have minutes from September 28th, October 5th, November 3rd, the work session of October 5th, and, um, November 9th, when we approved the warrant, um, the, the budget. Do I have a motion to accept all of them, or are there any questions or comments about any of them?
I move we approve all, uh, five of the minutes that you just named.
Okay, second, all right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Our next regular selectman's meeting is Thursday, November 30th at 5:30 PM here, and we have another, all the other meetings are listed on our website. And it's 7:30. Yeah, okay. I can't tell you how many times I screwed up in the water.